Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary to note roll call.
All members of the president, give your closing.
Board of course, on a report, Pat.
This will be very short. Of course, November 3rd is going to vote. There are a total of 51 school district referendums on the ballots this year. This November, 41 just school districts will be asking voters to exceed their exceed their revenue limits. Twenty-one of those are going to be for an issue debt for construction and new facilities. The other ones are just to support, exceed the budget to export, you know, and support their school operations. So it'll be kind of interesting to see how, since we're in the middle of this pandemic, how this is all going to play out with the voters and see how they feel on that. The DPI is asking the legislature to take up and pass a set of statutory changes to address the teacher licensing flexibility because I understand that the school districts are really in a bind trying to keep their adequate staff in the district. So hopefully that will go through. And Wisconsin received a $10 million federal grant to expand student mental health services, which is wonderful. It'll be $10 million over five years. So that will be great for.
Do they know how they're going to distribute it?
Hmm?
Any information on how they're going to distribute it?
More information in full news release later. So.
Okay.
That's it?
Yeah. Any questions for Pat? Hearing none, we'll move on. Board seats a report, Mick.
Oh, we were, we were a virtual meeting last month. The PAC meeting also was 100% virtual. They're working on a licensed pathway for to teach so you can have your teachers teach within your own district to be able to teach other subjects based on their skills. They're also, we're also working on doing the same thing for special ed. There are going to be two speakers coming up, one in November, one in December. One gentleman with the name of Mark Skogan in November. And Ken Williams, I think he came last year. I remember seeing his cardboard cutout at the convention. He will be there in December and it will be free to all seats of seven districts that want to attend. That's all I got.
Okay. Questions? Okay, we will move on to citizens delegation to be heard. Again, this is call in only. If there is anybody on the line that would like to be heard, please state your name and topic. Again, if there's anyone, please state your name and topic. Hearing nothing, we will move on. Board president announcements. Well, first of all, we had the region three WASBA meeting, all virtual. And Sue, today WASBODed in again as our director. And I would like to congratulate John from our board. He reached level three and he was recognized in that meeting. It was a little different being virtual, but that's, that's the new normal. The other thing is again with everyone getting so precaution fatigued, I want to just congratulate everyone who is working so hard to keep everyone safe. Masks save lives, masks keep our schools open. Masks are going to be the reason we can return to some kind of normality in our lives. So keep it up so that we can all do the best we can to take care of each other. And a big thank you again to the families, to the parents, to all the teachers who are working so hard to educate our students in this pandemic period. I'll move on now. Nick, administration report.
So just to kind of wrap up, we have quarter one is ending next Friday. Just overall, I think district wide, everybody has been pretty great navigating what is pretty turbulent waters all the time with information changing by the hour on some days. Today, for example, it was our worst day of quarantine at this building the whole year. So it's just one of them. So we have to be able to navigate that and respond accordingly. And I think everybody's used to that and people pick up. Pick it up really quickly and we are able to make sure everybody is safe as possible. Also, quarter one tomorrow, we're going to submit our Act 185 survey. Basically, Act 185 is trying to understand the impacts of COVID. I don't want to bore you to death with the impacts from COVID. I'm pretty sure you've been all aware of that stuff. The biggest impact is even capital compassion fatigue. And I just don't know how to handle some of that. We're just, you know, first small school district, but we still have open positions, no applicant. Nothing. We have teachers that are, you know, busting out and everybody's kind of worn out. So there's still a long haul ahead of us. And that's, that'll be a challenge managing that through the first one year. So that's basically what the survey is all about. We'll get that submitted tomorrow. So after you can hear the report to the legislature.
I'm at, at the WASBA session. I guess Jason, they had talked about WASBO giving you guys direction in terms of that number 18 and getting all the, all the costs in under other and all that kind of thing. Because I guess, I guess that specific line in that requirement was requested by the legislature. And they will be looking at that in terms of our funding decisions. So it's pretty important.
So WASBO did hold a meeting with all the business managers. I did attend.
Okay.
And they went through, actually question my question.
Okay, perfect.
Moving on to quarter two strategies, I think with the growing population of students and the virtual side of it. We're realizing that that's, it's quite a challenge for teachers to navigate both in person and also with virtual students. So should those numbers continue to grow, we will likely come to a point where we designate individuals that are solely responsible for virtual students and then others being solely responsible for in person. It's just a kind of a threshold thing. And right now, we're pretty close to it. And I, depending on the week, people are either overwhelmed or okay. So that tells me that it's manageable to a certain extent. But if we see another increase, we'll likely have to make that decision. So don't know how many people I would, you know, put on that. But it would certainly be considerable the number of kids that are virtual in our buildings. So we'll see where that all kind of plays out. But as of right now, we're treading water and things aren't getting better. Part of that is teachers not being their own worst critic and understanding that we're all kind of learning how to do this. And it doesn't, nobody asks them to be 100% perfect on this the first go around. So once we get over that hump, we get, we see a lot of, you know, anxiety reduction and we begin to settle out. So that's not to say that, you know, tomorrow at 10:00, kids tell us they're going to virtual. It's something that we need to keep an eye on.
The thing about virtual is it's not, I mean, it is a super learning curve, not only for the teachers, but for the parents at home that are trying, especially with the young kids when they have to literally be with them. I mean, so it's, I mean, they're not used to being teachers and they're being shoved into that role. And I think it's unknown what kind of expectations we can really have, you know, and how fast we can really go and all of that. I mean, this is all uncharted territory. So yes, I'm sure the teachers are hard on themselves if they feel like things aren't happening. But it's a whole new world and parents are struggling, everybody's struggling. And if we just keep working together, we'll get through it.
There are, you know, pockets of kids that are doing exceptionally well. I think you can see that when you look especially at like the juniors and seniors, we don't have a single junior or senior that's here in four blocks away. So they're coming for more content, but then they are comfortable enough to take on our electives virtually and do it that way. And many of them are finding that to be, you know, a better fit for them. So it's something that we have to keep a close eye on because I tend to believe that public education is fundamentally changing in front of our eyes. And we don't pay acute attention to where those trends are going and what kids are experiencing and doing well with. I think you could quickly fall behind and I don't really want to review that position. So it's something that we need to keep an eye on because we might need to adjust along the way.
Nick, do you see any hints of what the future is based on what you're seeing happening in universities nowadays? And how they're conducting their courses and classes and things like that? Would that be a good way of gauging how we should be changing what we're doing?
I certainly think that's in parallel to, I would say, your upper level students. How universities are operating and how those class levels are operating are very much the same. The point that I think we need to be really in tune with is making sure that the school district is always in a position to be the ones offering those courses. Because remember, we already have all these things in place where kids can go to universities, they can go to a school, but it's on our dime. And that could get incredibly costly if we don't offer that here, which is a wonderful opportunity for kids. But strategically, we need to position ourselves so that we're not taking 40 students and paying college tuition for 40 students. So the benefit of virtual though is, if you remember a few years ago, we were doing a lot of work with Harvard and other universities. A lot of that stuff was coming here. Our kids got the benefit of it and we weren't having to pay. So I think partnerships will be key, making sure that we are in line with especially local universities. Because I think building that partnership, I think helps both of us. And then also, you know, allows us to look a little bit further ahead than the next six weeks. Right now, it's hard to look six days ahead. But I've been saying, you know, after, after January 1st, I think you're starting, you're going to start to see movement with all that because you're going to get into the season of scheduling night and picking classes for next year. What's going to be offered? What's not going to be offered? And I think what's not going to be offered has a lot of weight. Unfortunately, some, you know, if you look five years ago, some of your most popular programs will probably not be offered because now there's no student interest. Because you have apprenticeship programs, you have schoolwork programs, you have local employers who have, you know, stepped up to the plate in thousands of ways, literally. So those opportunities are being realized earlier and earlier and earlier with our kids. So I think it's really complex and I think we have to watch it very carefully. And I would agree, John, I think also we do keep pace with the university of Illinois and the ETC and so on and so forth. Because older students, I've forecasted or forecasted that you're talking to sophomores now about those opportunities when a few years ago, that was really just senior level. Now you're talking to sophomores. And that, it changes how we operate, it changes our schedule, it changes so much of what we do here. Maybe it's, it's hard for me to, to fit in on that because I honestly believe that there are new opportunities popping up every single day. It's just how, how do we look at them and how do we strategically leverage where we are at, where they're at. Our kids have the best opportunity moving forward. So it'll be, be interesting because, you know, same token, some schools are saying, you know, the virtual stuff, they just bring in a whole new platform. Whereas we have made the choice to use our own platform and go that route. And that is signaling to me like, oh, so that's going to continue in those districts. Because that's a path forward for them, right? And they pay X amount of money, X amount of kids earn it, they can change their larger models or systems if you want, and they can keep moving forward. Whereas we don't do that. And we're starting to see the need to shift internally. So resource allocation and who's going to teach what and what grade levels. But I also think there's, in every presence, there is an opportunity. And I look at, that's the beauty of having a 712 building because you still have four years. Even if kids are starting to even take on different opportunities every year, you still have had four years with them. Whereas only having two years with them. So it's just, I guess.
It was going to be complicated without the pandemic. You know, the way things are changing. And like you said, it's, this may be moving us into it a little more quickly. And it's just something to be totally aware of.
I try to talk about that in my weekly communications that, you know, maybe six months ago, what people thought was, oh, that'll never happen. Is really like a great path for a lot of people now. And they're very accepting of it. So that just goes to show you how, it's literally from one end of the spectrum to the other in the span of four or five months. And a school year being nine months in total, you're talking wholesale swings in a school year. It really, I guess you're right, each semester. Keep an eye on it, see what happens. Breaks once amid all the, what seems to be negative and divisive things going on. There's really, as always, just great, great stuff. And I'm not going to be able to say every, you know, thing that's great. But I'm just going to, you know, do things off the top of my head that I think are really cool. First being teaching students in their action outside the school. I hear more teachers talking about stopping at somebody's house, dropping off some homework, project, and they get to talk to your family or what have you. And that's new. I think it's great. We have former student Avery Robinson. He's our social work intern this year. So it's wonderful to have former students back in our system working with our students. So he's been extremely helpful. He watched news at all, our virtual band and Veterans Day stuff. And he's getting a lot of publicity about that stuff, but it really boils down to educators saying, hey, nothing's perfect. We're going to get through this. We got to try and do some things.
Well, she was on channel two and I was really, that was neat. I thought, thanks to you, Nick. There are people who step out of the box and do something different.
Yeah. I didn't have anything to do with that one.
Well, you have given teachers that, which is a platform, yeah, that we can do things that are different.
What else I can add here about, just in general, their responsiveness and flexibility, growing your kids a good learning experience. And then the last one, I was just watching one of the videos before I came in here, Bob Graff is making videos of some of her students. And Mr. Chris Rathman gives us presidential facts. And it is one of the best five minutes of my entire week. It is so hilarious. He does a wonderful job at it. So it makes my whole week. And tonight, we had Connor Robinson do his, he's reading a book to elementary students. So he actually read it, tried it out, taped it today. So I was watching that before I came in here. His enthusiasm and his passion for reading that book was clearly evident and gives me a sense of good things are still happening. When it's really easy to kind of get tugged down into the crap, if you know, that happens every single day. So lots of positive things. Going to try and stay leaning towards that. And just keep working together and try to make sure that we have the best possible environment for learning to occur and that we are safe as possible, knowing full well that we're always going to have bumps in the road and you just have to be careful.
So right now, the high school is open and the elementary school is open. Are there any classes out?
So today, we, at the middle school, high school, we had 14 kids that we had in quarantine because of some positive cases. At the elementary, I don't think we have any. So you can see where we had a period of time where the elementary went through this. And the high school was, you know, doing relatively well. And now we are experiencing the joys of all of this. So.
But we are still having the in school.
Yeah. So now up here, the thing we had to remind ourselves of today is, you know, at the elementary, it's more, you're closing down classrooms because they're up, right? So up here, that's not necessarily the case. It's more student by student, learning kind of what their schedule is and who they're in contact with and so on and so forth. This particular situation had to do with Wolf Den. Then obviously Wolf Den spilled over to the high school, the mentors. Everybody was great. I honestly, I didn't hear any complaints. I just had a few students that, you know, I don't care, are upset. They don't want them. They don't want them to not be in school. They like it here. They, this is their place. So it's hard to talk to a seventh grader or tears run down their face because they didn't do anything wrong.
Right.
They, this is their place. So that's the hard part of all of that. But you'd have to do it to be safe and make sure that everybody else is safe and, you know, we can mitigate as best as we can. So we'll see where, we'll see where we go from here. But I'm sure we'll have some challenging weeks ahead of us here.
Any other questions for Nick? Can we move on to Katie?
Yeah. So I printed off all of their reports for you. I will give super high level. I'm not going to read them verbatim because obviously you can tell they're much more detail oriented than I am. Starting with Katie, I think she always does a great job with all of this.
Is, are they online?
They're on the call.
Yeah. Do you want them to do the?
If they want. I just said I would.
Katie, would you prefer to do your own report or would you like Nick to do it?
This doesn't matter. Can you guys hear me up here?
Yeah, we can hear you great.
It's up to you, Nick. It doesn't matter to me.
I think he's probably tired of talking.
Okay. Okay. I will, I will do my best to give you a brief summary. They've talked a lot about quarter two. So that has been definitely a focus of ours at the elementary as well. It kind of is interesting how it played out this year. I feel like just as we started with first quarter, we get a month under our belts and then we're already planning for second quarter. But you can see that we do have some students that will be returning to in-person learning. To start this school year, we had, I think it was 100 students that were either virtual or high grade of some sort. And of those, we have 26 students who are returning full-time in person. There has been some variance with that. So for example, we found some new students and they elected to start virtual. And then just today, we did have two students who just let us know, just indicated now that they are going to be returning in person. But those were the, the most recent numbers that I had at the time that I sensed that. So that is, I mean, that's a significant number of students who will be returning. I copied and pasted the chart. So you could see through all the different grade levels at the elementary, how many students were in-person learners, how many were virtual, and how many were hybrid for quarter two. So it's definitely interesting to see the breakdown in numbers. You know, definitely more heavy in virtual and hybrid in some grade levels than others. So with that, and knowing that we have a handful of students who will be returning, we have been doing a couple of different things. So teachers have been making adjustments within their classrooms. So that would be like furniture placement, student groupings that they might do for small groups. Just little things to accommodate some students, to accommodate the students that will be coming. In some grade levels, there's very, or in some classrooms, there is very little change. And in other classrooms, you know, you could have a classroom with maybe four or five students returning. So it definitely varies. We've had to shift around a little bit, some of the class lifts and shift teachers just because, you know, one student, one teacher might have 15 students and another might have seven. So we packed with those parents. We're very upfront about our reasoning and just, you know, we want to keep class sizes as small as possible across the board. So we had to do that. Some grade levels have focused their attention on making some adjustments within the way that they've been operating. So during the first semester, they have found what works really well. And they've also found what has continued to be a challenge over and over. So at grade levels, they've been talking about how to address some of those challenges. I gave a, I gave an example there of third and fourth grade. They started the year with grand plans to departmentalize and have one teacher teach one subject area for all of third and fourth grade. But that became very difficult in implementing that because of the ages of the students. They tried to kind of replicate what fifth and sixth grade was doing, but having a grade level of third graders on a virtual lesson compared to an entire grade level of sixth graders, there's just different nuances there that was really hard to manage. So each teacher is going to be shifting back for the time being. And they are going to be teaching the majority of all of the subject areas within their class just so they can get to know their students better, meet their needs better. And then also not necessarily have the focus be on implementing the technology, but rather the focus be on reaching those students. Again, given their ages and the fact that they hadn't been in school for a while. So that's another adjustment. And then the other thing in planning for quarter two, it kind of all happened very swiftly. But we did have an open position in third grade, for a third grade teaching, for a third grade teacher. Linda Lebat, who formerly had taught FIAED, has stepped into that position permanently. And then we did find a replacement. We offered the FIAED position to a school teacher. His name is Cameron Ruinwald. He's a recent grad in May. He was actually, his name was passed to me from the Bredels. So it was just kind of a nice transition and it worked out well. But he will be with us for this year. He's, at the end of this week, he'll be pushing out all of the virtual content and kind of leading in his own way. Up until this point, he and Linda have been working closely. So the two of them will continue to work. But again, he, as the start of the second quarter of the new year, he will be taking on the bulk of that. So I think that wraps up most of kind of the planning that has taken place for quarter two. Unless I'm missing something, but I don't think that is. And then the other two agenda items were very. Um, and then the other two agenda items were very brief, um, parent teacher conferences, obviously that's a big thing at the elementary school, um, we are doing them virtual this year because, um, obviously the situation doesn't allow for parents to be in and out of the building. So teachers are scheduling those virtually, um, to take place during the week of November sixteenth through the twentieth. Um, typically, we do those on one night, some teachers still are scheduling them to take place in one evening, other teachers have opted to spread them out a little bit over the course of the week, which actually we're finding is working very well because it helps, um, the teachers be able to accommodate the family schedules a little bit better than in the past. So, um, you know, there's some kind of sprinkles throughout the day, some early morning conferences, um, it actually has been an okay transition for the most part. And, um, and then lastly, the elementary and school playground. Um, I know I mentioned in a previous board meeting that the TTS is looking to begin fundraising again, to add in some equipment for our younger students, ages two through five specifically. Um, with the playground addition we did a couple of years ago, um, we, we put in some beautiful equipment, um, but with the addition of full-day 4K and then the creation of the Little Stars program, we have more three- and four-year-olds here throughout the day for longer periods of time accessing those, accessing that equipment. So we just wanted to add in something a little bit more age level appropriate for them. So we did meet with Megan Cunningham, she's the same representative that worked with us on our first project, and, um, we're just in the very initial stages, so we kind of walked her through some of the things that we'd like to see. She walked outside with me and we looked at locations, um, on where that could possibly go. It's looking like it will go on the side of the playground that has the two tire things. So there's a couple of new pieces of equipment over there, but there's a little bit room to expand, so we probably will opt for that side of the playground. Um, we really don't have an estimated time for that project, um, it's just something that we wanted to kind of get into motion, um, a lot of that heavily depends on fundraising, um, the situation that's going on with COVID and how that's been impacting things. Um, but Megan is gonna put together, Megan and her team will put together some options for design, um, and then we'll kind of piece it together from there, so I will share those out with everybody as soon as she gets those to us, so, um, any questions?
All sounds good, any questions for Katie? I see no questions, thank you Katie.
Thanks.
All right, we will move on then, business manager's finance bulletin report, Jason.
Um, we'll start with my little finance bulletin here. Turning the page, um, is the most important sheet that we use, which is our revenue limit worksheet. So we're gonna build this in a previous meeting in the budget period, but, um, we'll take a little more time to look at it. Starting on the left-hand side, uh, these numbers are generally included from the state, um, we don't actually input them, but there's two major numbers on the left-hand side, or actually three major numbers on the left-hand side. Um, one is our student count. On the left-hand side, you'll see that we have six hundred and forty-one students for the 2020, previous year was seven thirty-two. The good thing is, is with the revenue limit worksheet, it's a three-year rolling average, so it doesn't affect us drastically from year to year. So below that, you'll see in line ten B is our decline enrollment exemption of two hundred and seventy thousand, so that's the state basically artificially inflating our numbers so that we don't take a substantial hit. The very bottom number on the left-hand side is our equalized value for our district. So we are currently at four hundred and one million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, thirty-six dollars. So the values have gone up in our district, particularly in El Guan. Um, so that doesn't give us more money, it just determines who pays what share. So it doesn't have anything to do with money, it's just who determines who paid what share. Um, so that is what that is based on. On the right-hand side, uh, this is where all the calculations take place to find out how much we can tax. Starting from the top, um, our base revenue, um, of seven million, seventy-one thousand, three hundred is basically just taking, um, our number of kids times our base. So what we can possibly tax for without any additions or subtractions. Below that is our, um, average, so even though we have six hundred and forty-one kids, our average is really still at seven twenty-nine. Below that is our revenue base per member. We are an extremely low taxing district, um, and we were stuck in that from nineteen ninety-three. We will never get out of that, um, no matter what we do, we can tax to the max forever and we will never, ever outcase, um, the general state base for our students per member. So right below that, um, the state automatically increases us by three hundred, because the minimum this year is ten dollars per student. Continuing on down, uh, the next number that really makes a difference is under ten each, which is seventy-six thousand, six thirty-eight, so that is the money that goes to private schools that we can tax for, and that is the money that goes to, um, Milwaukee and Racine. So every school in the state pays into Milwaukee Racine.
Can I say that again, Jason?
So powerful legislators of Milwaukee Racine is really what it is. Uh, basically, they feel that they can't tax their local base tax enough to cover their students that they have there, so the legislators create a rule that says every state contributes to them a certain percentage. Or every district, I'm sorry, every district contributes. So, um.
Just remember that Wisconsin has the longest-standing school voucher program in the country. So that's where that all comes from.
And that's where it started, yep, is Milwaukee Racine.
And that's the only place it was.
Right, for a long time.
For a long time.
And the expanders stayed blind, now they have their little nuances to it, where it can't grow by X percent and so on and so forth, but I don't know about you, but it seems to be doubling every year to be exceeding, um, what they're telling everybody from over.
So that also includes though, any private schools in our district?
Do we know the breakdown?
Yeah, the break, sorry, yeah, it's exactly my same question, Pat.
No, because it's, it's previous year, so the state does not tell us, how can I say this? They will tell us the number of students, um, they will tell us what portion goes to Milwaukee Racine, um, but they won't tell us any other information than that. Generally, uh, the last time that, so this number that's based on this for this revenue limit, because you gotta remember, it's a year behind, that's not, this current year's, it's last year's numbers, um, was twelve students to the private schools. And then the rest was Milwaukee Racine.
Isn't there a report in October that tells us how many are on, um, voucher from our?
For the current year, correct, yep, for the current year.
Okay, so that, that information is available.
Yes, yep, but that is not, is what reflected in this number, so it's always a year behind.
Yep.
Um, so below that is our October fifteenth certification of general aid. So this is the number that we wait for and I wait for, um, because then I get this, this really, when I can start doing a lot of my stuff. This year, our general aid is four million, six hundred and ten thousand, eight thirty-four. So that is our aid from the state. Below that, um, you will see on the right-hand side is our thirteen, which is our allowable limit revenue, so which is two million, seven hundred, ninety-one thousand, three ninety-four. So that is our maximum that we can tax for. Continuing on down, um, these are the numbers that you will be approving for tonight. Fourteen A says basically, what do we wanna tax for, and we are taxing for the most that we can. Below that, fifteen A is our referendum, so this is our four-point-eight million dollar referendum for the elementary school net, um, and we are taxing for five hundred thousand dollars. So we are, um, basically called deficits, which basically is, we're paying off our debt early. Below that is our community service fund, and we'll cover that in more detail, um, and that is at two hundred thousand dollars. So that brings us to a total of three million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, three ninety-four as our levy, which gives us a levy rate of point zero zero eight six nine six two nine. So just slightly below last year's revenue limit and the levy rate. Any questions on the eleven, revenue limit worksheet? Looking at the page, um, is Fund Eighty, uh, so this is where by statute, we cover Fund Eighty in a little more detail, um, for the public meeting here. So the column that we're gonna look at is the left-hand side column, the numbers, um, and we'll just basically look at the totals, uh, but if you have any questions on any subtotals, let me know. So left-hand side, first number on the top is seventy-two thousand, that is our projected revenues for the daycare. Below that, uh, is one thousand, two hundred, um, which is our dues, um, so that would be for like, um, your participation fees for physical sports, um, anything like that. Below that is, um, one fifteen, which is basically our, um, grant from QI County. Um, so we have a grant from QI County, and that would be our revenue coming in from that. Below that is our WELAS center, so revenue of forty-five thousand. Below that is the breakdown of Fund Eighty revenues from each township, I'll cover that. Um, so this year's, uh, Fund Eighty revenue, um, from El Guan is ninety-five thousand, seven forty-two, twenty-one, from Annaphe, forty-seven thousand, four seventeen, dot oh three, Casco, eight thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and eight six cents, Lincoln, twenty-one thousand, five thirty-two, sixty-six, Pierce, twenty-six thousand, six ninety-five, twenty-four, which if you add up all the taxes would equal to two hundred thousand, that is our revenue limit worksheet. So that brings our total revenue to Fund Eighty to two hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred. Continuing down, uh, our total cost for childcare is a hundred and five thousand, four thirty-eight. Now, I'd like to specify, these budget numbers are strictly budget, also they are, I will say, like pre-COVID numbers, um, so like, for example, childcare, this is really three people in childcare, however, we have only had two people in childcare since the beginning of the year. As they start to get more kids back, we may have to go back and hire a third one, but it, the third one will be, is in the budget now. Looking at the page, uh, you'll see just some, uh, other expenses, um, so below you'll see, um, operations, which is fifteen thousand, seven eighty, so that is, uh, operations of the WELAS center. Below that, you'll see community band of twelve thousand, two seventy. You'll see co-curricular of twenty thousand, fifty, so that's your physical sports. Below that, you'll see three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars for community. Below that, you'll see forty thousand, nine fifty, that is our grant from QI, so those are expenditures in there. Looking at the page, you'll see five thousand, five hundred, um, that is our costing. Below that, you'll see one hundred and seventy-four thousand, three two, that is our cost for the WELAS center. So our total expenditures, um, will be three hundred, seventy-eight thousand, fifteen, uh, fifty-five, uh, you'll notice that expenditures are higher than the revenues, so that would give us a negative balance of nineteen thousand, eight fifteen, fifty-five. Um, we do have a fund balance in this account, uh, to help us weather the storm. Any questions on Fund Eighty? The last part of the packet is just what I normally give you guys for the, the current budget, uh, look at for this month, so that is in there. Um, so continuing on, um, we have two more parts of business with this, uh, one is, um, the WASB School Convention in January, it's virtual, uh, the registration information, uh, well, they sent it out, um, we can first register you guys October thirtieth, the cost is two hundred and forty dollars per person, um, so if you can, uh, just let me know if you'd like to attend, uh, here, and then we will each get registered and signed up and I got that.
Is there a, is there a discount for registering early, I mean, do you need to hear?
There is no, there's no discount for registering early, there is a discount for, depending on the number of registrants, so between five and eight people, you get a ten percent break. Um, so if you just let me know, um, or let Tammy know, even one of us, uh, if you'd like to register, like I said, it's all virtual, um, one thing that they do have on here, and I think, uh, we've taken care of this already, but, um, very important that we know that, uh, who is the delegate for the WASB Delegate Assembly, um, that will also be virtual, so I believe that is you.
That is me, yeah.
Uh, so we do have you set up for that, so you should receive an email, um, pertaining to that, to, uh, attend the Delegate Assembly.
Virtually.
Virtually, so.
Maybe you'll probably be there too.
I couldn't think of a more exciting opportunity.
It's not that great in person.
Yeah, I've been there once before, after a while. Okay.
Jason, did you set that up for her, or how did you, what did you mean, you sent her, sent her, sent in the information or?
Yeah, sent them in.
And she'll get information back?
For the delegate, yeah, so, um, yeah, because they're asking us to send that in, um, they will allow changes, uh, but we greatly appreciate you keeping the last minute changes to a minimum so that we can ensure everyone has access, so, so we've sent that information in, um, I knew you could do it from the previous meeting, so it hasn't sent in, so hopefully they'll send that in for you.
I'm sure Mick Cecil makes sure you're all set too.
The last part of my thing is the Nick Lady Bank Wealth Management, um, asking you again to approve them, um, for our vehicle, um, for our fund balance. So basically what that means is, uh, every year, as you guys say, to approve them, um, we have CDs with them, um, for our Fund Ten fund balance. So I believe I'm locked in until twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four at two-point-three something. So, yep, so we'll leave those in there as long as humanly possible, um, because I don't think I'll get that rate again for a little bit, so, uh, but, uh, but I need you guys to approve that, to leave those CDs in there. And use them as our basically, uh, investments for Fonten.
Do we need to specify Fonten or? Do we need to specify Fund Ten or just District Fund Balance?
Uh, no, just District Fund Balance. Because that money could be Fund Ten money, it could actually be Fund Twenty-One money. It's whatever money we have tied up in there that we don't need for basically our operating expenses.
All right, any questions for Jason? Was there a question for Jason? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. Special Ed Report and Pathfinder update. Katie Horn, would you like to give your own update?
Sure, I can do that.
Go ahead. We, we do, we do have the printouts from your emails, just so you guys do know that we have that.
Okay, um, the special ed, so as Katie says, there's a decent amount of kids coming back for quarter two with elementary school, and quite a few of them are some of our more high-needs kids. So the teachers and I are trying to creatively plan around the return of some of those students, which is kind of creating a challenge with scheduling. So due to this, we might need to hire an additional paraprofessional. We're technically still down three from last year, but we've been managing because quite a few of the kids went virtual. But there are just, you know, quite a few coming back for quarter two. So it's been kind of tricky, but we are getting as creative as we can to plan for those kids coming back. The second thing I have is Cory Zimmerman had approached the school about getting some student workers since the dog is not stationed at the school anymore. I think there's been, you know, a lot of interest from students to work at MCC. So he came and presented to Amy Koshkoff's classroom about MCC, and then her and I took the kids and went on a tour. And it's always cool for me to go on these tours with kids that have never been there, and they don't know what this business and their community has to offer. So after they toured there, a lot of the kids were like, oh, my gosh, this is cool. They want to work there. So so far, there's three kids from her classroom that have been hired on to do general labor work. And actually, two kids from Pathfinder that just started there in the last two weeks, which is really, really a great opportunity for those students. And then he also came back, and I know he met with Teal and Amy about exploring a mentorship opportunity with some of the MCC employers and some of Amy's kids and maybe the Pathfinder kids. So I think there's really cool things to come with that. The third thing for special ed I have is the students that are involved in the Ability Project. So over a hundred masks now, which was a huge feat for them to do. And then I know Nick had mentioned Connor before, one of the students involved in that project. But he is very, very artistic and loves cartooning. So they gave him the old wolf logo and let him put his own spin on it. So he gave him like gloves from nineteen-twenty cartoons, like different shoes and kind of different eyes on the vintage wolf. And they printed it on a T-shirt, and we'll be selling the new updated vintage wolf apparel for Elgoma. So they're doing T-shirts and toast with Connor's design on it. So that's really cool. He was super excited about it, made a video on how he designed it. So if anybody wants one of those, you can contact Amy Shenbergers. And then for Pathfinder, Brightspot, we have one student that handed in her last credit this week. So she's officially done and graduated, and she's one of the kids that got a job at MCC. So it's been really cool, the fact that, you know, she worked super hard the last two years to get her credit done and being done this early, I'm super proud of her. So that's one of the big bright spots there. And then all but two kids will be back in person at Pathfinder starting quarter two. So we can forward to seeing those kids back. And that is all, yeah?
Sounds great. Any questions for Katie? I hear no questions for you either, so thank you, Katie. All right, we'll move on to the Elgoma Monthly Update. Teal.
Hello, everyone. Since you got my full report, I'm just going to try to give a brief overview. What I did is kind of just an update and reflection on some of the grants and programs that we have currently operating under the Elgoma School District Community umbrella. One is the Now Gardening Space. We did get, have interest in funding, and they were committed to fund five additional hydroponic units. But we have decided collectively that we need to put a hold on that just due to our capacity. Currently, we're operating three, but with the school not being able to utilize the produce so far with lunches. We've only really been able to give our local produce to the food pantry, our Wolf Den after-school program. The Elgoma Methodist Church provides meals to our families in need. And then as well, we've been delivering to some of our business partners like MCC. So without a higher need and also without the capacity, we've just decided to pause on that. Wolf Den after-school program, I wanted to give you an update on our grants report, because I really haven't done that yet. We are entering our last year of our grants, which we were awarded almost three-hundred-thousand dollars through basic needs giving grants. We have calculated that it costs about forty-five thousand dollars per year to run the program all year round. And because we've been able to work with community partners and other various stakeholders, we really have been able to save and not utilize a lot of our grant money that we requested. So we have about half of our grant money left, and the grant funders are very pleased with the program and its results and are fine with us adding additional years to our grants. And I think they probably are also interested in seeing how Wolf Den continues, especially during COVID times. We've connected with them three times already since March, just giving them updates as they're really the youth and most in our bright spot in our region. So happy to report about, about that. And one thing with Wolf Den due to COVID is we've been having the smaller group sizes, which will require us to have one more additional employee than I think we've had in the past just because we have to keep these group sizes smaller. And so we're looking to approve three additional Wolf Den workers. I know that we had locked two just due to them going on to college. So we're looking for one additional one. And traditionally, we don't hire college students, but one of our, one of the people that we are offering a job to, her name is Alex, and she works for Phoenix Behavioral Health. So she's already working in our school with some of her clients, and she's going to college for social work. In the past, she's volunteered for Wolf Den for some experience. And I think that just her experience will be really value-added during the time of COVID when mental health and basic needs and health and safety at the forefront of our work. So the community's advocate position, she's doing a really great job, and we are very blessed to have her during COVID-nineteen. She's working with twelve students. She's working with Katie Horn. They do an afternoon kind of session with some students that are in person, or virtual. And Katie, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I think it's about six students that she's working with, providing some needed homework, help, and connection with teachers. Also due to COVID, we have not utilized a lot of the money that was allotted. We were allotted a hundred thousand dollars for the community's advocate position. And due to COVID, I think some of the resource allocation for that, Amanda has not utilized to its fullest because people were virtual for a while. So we have remaining funds. And again, we, they really just really loved the work we were doing with the youth and the connection we were making with the youth and the different systems we're working with. We were able to now use that remaining money this year to purchase a mobile resource RV. With the help of Jason and Lot, in the next few weeks, we'll be purchasing a mobile resource RV that will really be dual-purpose. So for our students being virtual, we will be able to mobilize this resource RV to their home. And we can provide services like translation services for those who speak Spanish, mental health connection through a virtual setting, special education. We could even tap into some of our physical therapy or occupational therapy, speech therapy sessions right there on the RV, which would help for us not necessarily to have to go inside the home if, you know, families are uncomfortable with that or if students need a break. So I'm really excited about that. And then in addition, good news is we applied for an additional grant, and we received that just due to the work that we've been doing as a community's advocate, and so they stayed funded for another year of this position. The Recharge Your Guide Resource Room, really quick, we just have a new high school leader. And I think this is a bright spot because instead of having these three physical rooms that I know we've talked a lot about in the past, she is now reviving them into a virtual platform. And her name is Mialia, and she's really doing a great job of including lots of stakeholders around her and really doing this off-the-ground. So we're going to hear more about this as it's going forward. She's really working with Avery Robinson, our social work intern. They meet twice weekly, and so I think we're going to see a lot of exciting things coming up with that. And last but not least, our Latinx Project, that's in partnership with UW Madison and UW Extension. We've been handing out surveys to our Latinx students, both in English and Spanish, just getting their responses back about how it feels to be a student that you, that fully identify themselves as Latinx. And so we are asking them questions, how it feels to be a student in our district. How do they feel living in our community? Do they have some suggestions, improvements? How do they relate to their environment in which they live? And we're also asking our science teachers some questions. And the reason is because we want to work together to develop more culture-responsive curriculum and science curriculum that is based in, you know, local environment things. So having the students explore the great of Great Lakes or Black Ash or any other places we have around here is important to us and our, and our youth. And Abigail Robinson is leading that project as an intern with many others around her. And the bright side, right in my reports, is that the Riverwood Johnson Foundation had their annual tribe community celebration, and she was, she and two of their youth were picked in the United States to be speak on a panel. And when I get that recording, I will definitely send that out because it is a very proud moment again for our school district's community, for somebody who was a part of, I think Anne Schmidt before said that, you know, that really created a culture where not only staff, but youth feel that they can be part of the change and be part of the solution. And, and so she's really a bright spot in the past and is still continuing to make a difference in our community. So I'll make sure to share that out. And I just want to add just all of these grants and programs that are based in our schools, that serve our youth and our families to create more opportunities and keeping equity at the forefront. They are just fully funded outside of school. And the remaining balances that we have, the management, the responsive management of our funds, the way that each of these programs are being recognized, not only in our region, but in our states around the country. People want to learn about our methods and our approach to the work. Even during COVID, I think these are continuing to be bright spots in our country, and I think we need to be very proud of that. Last but not least, the All-American City Award. I just wanted to give a quick note, maybe when you walk past Nick's office tonight, there's a collection of letters, green letters from years from around the country, little trinkets. I know one of the students that Nick was talking about that did the President's Weekly Fact, which is great. He, he took one of the masks and the hats and a pin that one of the mayors from the city of Miami, Florida, or Miami Gardens, Florida, had sent. And so I think that's just kind of fun stuff that we definitely weren't expecting for the All-American City Award to, to just get a little letter of congratulations. So take a little peek at that, and there we are.
So are, are we going to be getting banners up around the city? Is that the plan?
Yes, so they're going to give up, I believe it's twenty-five or thirty-five. I can't remember the right number, but we'll be getting banners, and we will have the opportunity to hang those on light poles around the city once we get them. I have been bringing that up through the city, the drill activity that I'm on to the city council. So I think that's more space-based into that. It should be coming the next two weeks, they thought, so.
Great, all right, thank you. Any questions for Teal? I hear none. Thank you, Teal. All right, moving on, committee reports. We had a finance committee meeting on October nineteenth.
We did, we did at Dave's house. We went through the budget a little bit more extensively than we did tonight. Jason did a nice job with it, as always. We're recommending that we do the deficits and to recommend approval of the twenty-twenty-one budget, which we did at the six o'clock meeting. So I don't think we need to elaborate on more because Jason already covered all of that, so.
Any questions for Pat? All right, moving on, other specific items for discussion? Anything? Okay, then we will move on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, and the finance committee meeting minutes of October nineteenth, twenty-twenty.
So move.
Motion made by Pat. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joanne. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, I'm not opposed. I had a minute, I didn't get it.
Okay. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills presented to you.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion made by Ann, seconded by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, are the rest of these all roll call? Okay, so the next one, two, three, four, five, it looks like, are going to be roll call votes. So I need a motion to approve the final budget twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year.
I so move.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Joanne, seconded by John. Roll call vote, Dave.
Eric.
Ann.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Pat?
Yep.
John?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
And I also say yes. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the tax levy for Fund Ten in the amount of two million seven hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred ninety-four.
So move.
Motion made by Pat. I need a second?
Second.
Second by Ann. Roll call vote, Dave.
Eric.
Ann.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Pat?
Yep.
John?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
And I also say yes. Motion carries. I need a motion for the approval of the tax levy for the Capital Project Sinking Fund Thirty-Nine in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion made by John, seconded by Joanne. Roll call vote, Dave.
Eric.
Ann.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
And I also say yes. Motion carries. I need a motion for the approval of the tax levy for Community Services Fund Eighty in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
I so.
Go ahead.
Okay, I have a motion by Joanne, seconded by Ann. Roll call vote, Dave.
Dave.
Ann.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Pat?
Yep.
John?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
I'll just say yes. Motion carries. Do we need a roll call vote for the wealth? Okay, I need a motion to approve the Nicolay Bank Wealth Management as a vehicle for school district fund balance.
So move.
Motion made by John. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann. This is our last roll call vote.
Do I need to abstain from this?
Eric.
I don't, no, I don't think so.
Ann?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
And I also say yes. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve a twelve-hundred-fifty-dollar donation from H.S. Baird, number one-seventy-four Masonic Lodge and Wisconsin Masonic Foundation for COVID Relief.
So move.
I so move.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Dave, seconded by Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Elgoma School District calendar.
So move.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Pat, seconded by Mick. Okay, motion made by Pat, seconded by Mick. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any requests for future agenda items?
I just want to point out the calendar. We traditionally have spring break at the end of March. However, we moved that to April because of how late Easter was. So it's just been up by eye.
All right, I hear no requests for agenda items, so I need a motion to go into executive section under the Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five subsections one C, E, F, and I for the purpose of personnel matters, hires, staffing, and resignation.
So move.
Motion made by John, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Anne. Roll call vote, Dave.
Eric.
Anne.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Mick.
Yep.
And I also say yes. Thank you, everyone, on the phone, and have a great week.
When is Easter?